We're close enough, we're going to call the May meeting of the Common Council to order. Please, please rise for the pleasure allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Heidi?
Here.
Clinker?
Here.
Reynolds?
Up here.
Campbell?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Alders Meyer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Four in present.
Thank you, I need a motion to suspend the meeting for a purpose of a public hearing on ordinance 2014-07, Mr. Campbell.
Don't move.
Mr. Clinker?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now suspended for a brief period of time for the purpose of considering public comment on ordinance 2014-07, do you want to read the ordinance?
An ordinance for appropriation of local highway user tax funds, County Wheel Tax Fund number 249.
This is an ordinance that was considered last month and it's a proposal on how we spend some of our local option, highway tax money on local streets and city roads and so by, by law we have to have a public hearing before we consider it for final hearing. Anyone at this point in time would like to come forward and address or offer public comments on this ordinance on local highway user tax funds? Seeing none, Mr. Campbell?
I move the hearing be closed and we re-adjourn for...
Mr. Reynolds, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, we are resuming now the regular meeting of the Common Council. Approval of the minutes of April 7th, 2014, what's the pleasure of the council, Mr. Campbell?
I move those minutes be approved as communicated.
Second. All in favor, first of all, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, the minutes are approved. Presentation and disposal of claims?
There are none.
Presentation of petitions or communications?
There are none.
Reports of city offices?
Clerk's office, march, police department, march, fleet maintenance department, march, fireworks department, march, and a 2013 annual report, water pollution control department, march.
Thank you, as a reminder to the public, those reports that were just recited by the city clerk are on file at the city clerk's office and available for anyone to review at regular business hours. Moving now on to ordinances for second reading, ordinance 2014-07.
An ordinance for appropriation of local highway user tax funds, County Wheel Tax Fund number 249.
What's the pleasure of the council, Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2014-07.
Mr. Alders Meyer?
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-07, this is the appropriation of the highway user funds, this is what we just had the public meeting about just a moment ago, at this point is there someone to present the ordinance, Mr. Jones?
Mr. President, Mike Jones, Controller, nothing has really changed from the first reading that you have, we did give a list of streets that we hope to stretch the dollars across and get started on, there's plenty of paving to do and of course the money for the local roads and streets, or excuse me, wheel tax comes in all year long each month so we, we hope that we have more than, if, if more should come in, we'll add to this list, but right now this is our best estimate and hopefully we can get all this done quickly.
And this is for appropriation of approximately 900,000?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Any questions of Mr. Jones?
About my street.
Look at the list again, Mr. Campbell.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any comments by council, members of council? Any comments from the general public about this particular ordinance, this is your second opportunity to speak on this tonight? Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote on the ordinance.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alders Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, eight to zero.
Thank you, the ordinance is passed, moving to ordinances for first reading, ordinance 2014-08.
An ordinance established a three-foot safe passing distance between motor vehicles and bicycles.
Thank you, what's the pleasure of the council, Mr. Heidi?
I move for passage of ordinance number 2014-08.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-08, is there someone here to present the ordinance?
I sponsored the ordinance and I guess I did it for a number of reasons, number one, of course, it's a safe and right thing to do, there was some questions on the enforcement of the ordinance and I looked at many city ordinances and they are not enforced that well, people are going to speed, there's laws out there about that, any number of crimes there are laws against that and enforcement is a difficult thing, but I think that everyone in this room gives bicyclists the three mile, or three-foot passing lane. My only complaint about the bicycles in general is that if I'd ridden my bike down here today, I could not find a place to lock it, they were all taken. But I think that the mayor presented this material, or the material on this particular ordinance in a very good way, from the standpoint of cities that use a great deal of bicycles, it's important that we have that we, the three-foot lane and we make the city a place where bicycles are encouraged. There's no question they save on the fuel and in spite of what some people think, there is evidence to show that the gases are going to be something to consider, not by any of us in this room, but I think on our children and their children as we go through, so anything we can do to encourage the use of bicycles, and he was talking about the fact that it is part of a trail system and things of that sort, must be encouraged.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, while I'm not that concerned about you locking up your bike, I'm more interested to watch you ride the bike back up the hill. Anyone else right now? Go ahead, Margie.
I have a PowerPoint presentation that I put together this morning at the department head meeting, the mayor asked that I present some information, some basic background, so if you want to put the...
Like to move down here so we can review it?
Well, I think somebody took our wireless mouse with them to Michigan, so anyway. Because we have fun in our office as well as work, this came across on Facebook one time and I saved it and I knew eventually there would be a good use for it and I thought it was a good way to start, so, and I thought I would start out too by saying, you know, it's full disclosure, I'm a cyclist, I commute on my bike as often as I can, and that started when I was going to college in Ball State, I rode my bike until I was seven months pregnant and had to get off of it and my son just turned 35, so, so that's that. So, there is a purpose behind the, the three-foot safe passing distance, it's as much about increasing safety for bicyclists and motorists on the road, but it's almost, it's also as much about trying to change our culture, for decades it's been a very car-centric culture and this ordinance is one step towards the complete streets policy that APC has adopted for Tipton County that says that all users of the road are entitled to it and should be able to safely use it, so, some misconceptions, many motorists think that bicycles belong on sidewalks and there are even some cyclists who believe that the safest place for them to ride is on sidewalks, both are false. Bicycles are recognized as vehicles in the state of Indiana, they have all the same rights and responsibilities on the road and that is a true statement. I copied this one section out of the driver's manual that I was going to go and pick everyone up a copy of this morning, but their office is closed on Mondays, so, so you can see, you know, drivers routinely have to share the road with cyclists and even though the state of Indiana doesn't specifically call out a number saying that a car passing a bicycle has to give three feet safe distance, they do put that in parentheses, you can see under the first bullet, as a recommendation, so even at the driver's manual level, they recognize three feet as being a safe distance. So, a little over a year ago, the mayor met with a number of department heads, as well as myself, coming with Dennis from the Economic Development Department, and he was interested in making Lafayette a bicycle-friendly community, and that's a program that's run through the League of American Bicyclists. So, we took that seriously and started looking at ways that could happen and this ordinance is one of them. So, it also helps reduce congestion, this is a slide I'm sure I saw 15 or 20 years ago, where it shows the difference between the same number of people traveling by bicycle, on the far left, by car, in the middle, and by bus, on the right, so it reduces congestion to be bicycle-friendly and to encourage people to ride bikes, it also saves money on infrastructure. Now, if anybody here is a Maple Leaf, like my son-in-law, you'll recognize the, the coffee is Tim Horton, if this were a slide from the United States, it would say Starbucks, but the breakdown is essentially the same, and this is based, it's a little computer model that you can put your commute distance into and I put in three miles. So, if I traveled three miles to work from home every day annually, this would be the breakdown of the costs if I rode a bike, if I owned a car and drove a car every day, or if I took transit. And probably the most important information is at the bottom, the number of these coffees and chocolate donuts that you can have is pretty significant, oh, is it like 90, yeah, 98 if you're riding a bike, zero if you're in the car, and 73 if you're taking transit, so, again, there's significant savings. Now, in terms of the bicycle-friendly community, this is just a quick scorecard that you can use to kind of gauge where you are as a community, and I did this last year and unfortunately out of 17 possible points, we had five. I did give us a maybe score on two of them, if we do pass a local ordinance to treat bicycles equitably on the right, and also the complete streets policy, we have one that, that's in place for federally funded, or any road projects, federal or state money, but we are interested in having one passed at the, at the city level, so we'll, we'll be back with that, probably in a year. I was going to say, there are, there are some communities in the state like Indianapolis and Bloomington that are in much better shape than us, so maybe we should feel better or not, that as a state we rank 37 out of 50 states, so there's, there's work to be done at the state level as well. So, I know a couple members of the council talked to me about bicyclists being, needing to be responsible on the road as well as motorists, and that's absolutely true, the pie chart actually has very similar results to the crash report data that Doug Poe put together for Area Plan Commission, it was just published like within the last month or two, which shows that motorists and bicyclists are pretty close to equally responsible or being at fault when there's a crash. I thought the, I don't know that it's a fun fact, but interesting fact, the very first car crash did kill a cyclist and that was in 1896, it's amazing what you can find out on the internet, but I thought what was important is the chart that I've seen at the bottom, it's actually has pedestrian data in it, but when you think of a person on a bicycle compared to someone who's walking, the results when you're hit by a car is, is going to be very similar, so even though the pie chart, pie chart shows equal responsibility, you know, in terms of who's at fault when there's an accident, as you can see, the cyclist is the one who's, who's going to fare worse, so I think that's another, another reason for having the safe passing distance. So, you would think you're driving a car, it's common sense to give more room to someone on a bike, but, but I don't know that it is common sense because there, a law has to be passed to tell people to slow down and get in another lane when you're going past a police officer who has someone pulled over, or, you know, being told that you have to pull over when emergency vehicles go by, and the school bus safety, you can be fined, you know, up to a thousand dollars and spend 180 days in jail if you pass a bus that's, has its red stop sign out and flashers on, so, common sense, yeah, maybe, you know, 85, 90% of the time, but there's always those that make it unsafe on the road, so, again, the need to have an ordinance like this. So, I put together my own little multiple choice quiz, because I think, you know, when you look at the bicycle racer, when people are in cars, they think this is someone who's accomplished, they know what they're doing and maybe they don't need to give them so much room, so, you know, that was my question, who should we give three feet to? You know, just some cyclists, all cyclists, you've got someone who's very accomplished, you've got a dad and his toddler, you know, a new young rider and a mom who's commuting with a child on the back, so which of those four? And the answer would be all of the above, and you can see why. So, that's the end of my presentation, I have spoken to Jay Rosine, Sergeant, Jay Rosine from the Lafayette Police Department, he's one of our bicycle officers, and I'd like him to come up and say a few words about what it's like to be a bike cop.
Thank you. My name is Jay Rosine, I'm a sergeant with the Lafayette Police Department, and I'm also in charge of our bike patrol here for Lafayette Police Department, I've had an opportunity here, Mr. Campbell, and appreciate the comments that he's made and also I appreciate him for sponsoring the bill, I'd like to thank the Bicycle Lafayette guys for being here too, we've worked with them over the years, and actually it's kind of a two-way street like what you talked about at the caucus hearing, Mr. Meyer, as far as not only educating the public, as far as bicycle safety and motorists being aware of bicyclists, but also with bicyclists and following the rules of the road, and we talk about that whenever we get a group, whenever we get a chance to meet and things of that nature, it should also be noted that this week I'm actually putting on a bike school for area police departments, we have folks here from Vincennes, Indiana, and also from Maryville, Indiana up north. So, we're trying to do our job as far as educate the public and educate other police officers as far as with bicycle safety and also, we're trying to get out there with other groups like the Tipton County 4-Hers, as far as putting on a bike safety demonstrations and, and helping them out with their bicycle rodeo projects and things of that nature as far as trying to educate the public. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but I know one came up as far as enforcement. Basically, as far as enforcement with the Lafayette Police Department, it's going to be a judgment call with each officer and basically we're going to have to use officer discretion and also use our best judgment, what we're going to have to do is basically take the totality of the circumstances, whether an officer, you know, witnesses something as far as an infraction or an ordinance violation happening, or if we show up on a crash and we did not view that, you know, talk to witnesses who might have been there on the scene, so it's going to be basically a step-by-step basis and I can't give you a, a one specific scenario because we're going to see multiple scenarios that might be taking effect as far as how this ordinance can be applied, but either way it's going to be a tool in our toolbox for us to help with bikers, whether they be commuting to work, or whether they be out biking as far as in a recreational setting, so, that's really all I can think of as far as to address you folks with, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you Sergeant, Councilman Dow.
I have a question, the bicycle lane is established, okay, and they're using it, do they have to have, I just saw it was in the state law, do we, do they have to have lights on those things at night, evening, is there a time limit on that?
Yes, they are supposed to be equipped with not only a headlight, but also a taillight, so, and not only that, but it's, it's also what we like to teach is wear reflective clothing and, you know, we just try to educate the public on that, not only a headlight as well as a taillight, but also reflected clothing.
So, if somebody didn't have a light on their bicycle, you could pull them over?
Yes, that could be a state, you know, a state infraction, so.
Thank you, any other question of Councilman?
Not of Sergeant, but I, I'd like to point out a couple of things, number one, we have an open container law, and it's Lafayette and it is here, so I think you're going to get more consistency between the two communities. Secondly, you've talked a great deal about education and I think the police officer has a great opportunity for educational process to take over with these cyclists. Number three, I think that if we were to ask an honest question of everybody in this room, they would say that their parents taught them how to ride a bicycle, and I think that that, the importance of that cannot be overlooked, our first teacher is hopefully our parents for anything we do, and it is obvious in our society that many times this first teacher does not do an adequate job of teaching their youngsters, but I think that that's one of the things that has to be stressed from the standpoint of bicycle safety. I would hope that everybody here learned from their parents how to ride a bicycle, whether it was a three-wheeler years ago, which I'm going back to, I think, maybe that's what is true, older you go to three, or maybe four wheels in my case.
Sure, and maybe just to expand upon that and what Margie said, she talked about common sense, but also we need to talk about courtesy and patience when you're dealing with bicycles.
Absolutely. But I would hope that everyone would support this.
Thank you, any other questions of the Sergeant? Alright, thank you. At this time, Margie? How many are speaking from Bicycle Lafayette?
Okay, I just, alright, I didn't know, that's fine, thank you, come on forward.
Thank you, please state your name and address.
Sure, yeah, my name is Aaron Madrid, I live at 615 North Street in Lafayette, Indiana, just down the road, and I want to thank you first of all for being so supportive of all of the bicycle improvements that have been going on in, in both Lafayette and in general Tipton County, but specifically Lafayette tonight, over the last couple of years, Bicycle Lafayette was founded, our mission is to promote cycling as a safe, healthy, and viable form of transportation in Lafayette and West Lafayette, our, our little badge, you probably can't see on my shirt, but it says advocacy and education, and while I could give you a whole lot of reasons why I personally believe that the three-foot passing ordinance is absolutely vital to a community and for many reasons, I, I just want to focus on the fact that one of our big initiatives is education, I'll hand these out, you may have seen them already, if you want to pass them around, cards that we made last year, one side you'll see has some of the basic ordinances that are shared between Lafayette and West Lafayette that pertain to cyclists, and the other side actually is a bit of an informational cartoon for drivers, when they come up on a cyclist, you can take a look at it yourself, I basically just want to say that as far as the education of our current ordinances and, you know, potentially this three-foot passing ordinance goes, one of our biggest priorities is to educate cyclists and drivers whenever we can about all of the rules of the road to make sure that people are doing their part to, to be legal in all aspects and safe, that means that before we go out on a ride with people, you know, as opposed to just hopping on our bikes and going, we like to tell everybody, we're going to be riding no more than too wide, you know, if we're going to be out at night. It saves some people's lives, I busted a couple open that probably would have been me busting my head open if I wasn't wearing, so I, I try to wear mine as often as possible, though I don't always, but basically we just wanted to let you know that, you know, in the past we've done a couple of the, well, we've done one bike rodeo so far, last year it was probably our most successful event, we partnered with New Community Schools, because like you said, Ron, you know, basically reaching out to kids first and teaching them those good, best practices and how to be safe at a young age is really the best way to start them, and so we, we felt it was, you know, good to reach out to kids first. The biggest challenge that we've kind of run into in general with more of our educational things and doing things like printing more pieces of materials like this that we can hand out all over the county, is either a volunteer issue or a funding issue, so I just wanted to let you know that as education is a big part of our mission, we are more than happy to partner with the city on more of a, you know, a deeper level basically, you know, I can think of a variety of ways we could do that, but basically to step up our educational efforts as well to help kind of, you know, make sure that we're getting everybody informed, because obviously any ordinance or, you know, law at all isn't going to be any help of, to anybody if they don't know anything about it, and there's a lot of other ordinances people need to know about as well, so, we just wanted to offer that up to you, if, if at any point we can figure out a way to work together to step up our educational efforts, we'd be more than happy to do that, and yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Very well done, thank you.
If you're going to vote, I'll stay till you vote and then I'm going to run, yeah.
Any other comments from members of the public?
Perry, Barbie 3700 wrote, but I was going to bring this up later on, but since we're the topic now bring up now, this is Bicycle Safety Month, and everybody's on my journey all over town, they say about the safety, or the unsafety of people that's not obeying the safety when they ride at night, they don't wear light casual clothing, and they weaving the traffic quite a bit, and not just at night, and during the daytime, people goes on the sidewalk in the uptown, downtown, in the areas where the bicycles shouldn't be, and just want to be courteous of where the bicycles shouldn't be on the sidewalks, just keep those in mind and make sure that kids have their helmet on all the time, that's all I got to say, I think these guys here are doing a great job promoting their bike safety.
Thank you Perry.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Alkar?
My name is Ben Alkar, I live at 1621 Columbia Street.
-in which you can talk about chickens, or poultry, ducks, whatever they are.
Thank you, Ron. I came in late, and I didn't know the rules.
Thanks, Ben. Anyone else like to comment on the bicycle ordinance? Any other final comment? Mr. Brown?
Boy, oh boy. Since I was the guy who brought up the idea about enforcement, I guess I'd better stand up for this. While most, most of the behaviors that we try to affect here in the council, we do with like a carrot and a stick, you know. Sometimes we use two sticks. But my experience with this is a little different. As a bicycle rider, when I was nine years old, I blew through a stop sign. And the last thing I remember before I experienced the physics of automobiles and bicycles was saying, boy, this guy's going to be really upset after he grinds his tires off, and he doesn't hit me. The next thing I knew, I was airborne. Felt like lint. Insignificant. We need to start the education here, before someone goes through what I went through, flying through the air, or what that man went through, because I saw his face just before he hit me. He was terrifying. So it goes both ways. Yes, the officers are going to have, going to have some issues enforcing this, enforcing this ordinance, but I'm going to vote for it, because the education has to start here and now. We will move forward from this point. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other comments from council?
All for the question.
Question's been called. We'll have a real call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Always Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passed with eight to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed for first reading. Thank you to the members of Lafayette Bicycle Club for being here and supporting that.
Mr. President, I need to excuse myself, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to the next ordinance, 2014-09.
An ordinance to amend the subdivision ordinance of Tippecanoe County, Indiana, Uso Amendment Number Nine.
What's the pleasure of the council, Ms. Aldrich Meyer?
I move we hear and approve ordinance 2014-09 on first reading.
Downing.
Second.
Then moved in second to consider 2014-09. Is there someone to present the ordinance, or Mr. Chasnick?
I can, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chasnick.
Okay.
Okay. The way the Area Plan Commission works, and our zoning ordinances work, they want each member agency to pass the same ordinance. This is one that's promoted by the Area Plan Commission, although, as I think it was you, Mr. Meyer, aptly pointed out, I don't believe we have any agricultural land within the, within the city limits, probably doesn't apply to us. But the purpose of this ordinance is to, back in, I think it was 2002, they tried to eliminate sliders, and they set them up just for the AA zone, which they created a number of new zones. And that was basically agricultural and housing that was farm, farmers' houses that were in agricultural zone. And they decided that that actually eliminated AW, which is agricultural, and woods, and the A-zone, which is just pure farmland. And they think that it's appropriate to allow parcelizations in those two. And that's all this ordinance does.
Any questions of Mr. Chasnick? Any comments by council? Any comments from members of the public on this ordinance, 2014-09, which is an amendment to the zoning, the subdivision ordinance of Tippecanoe County? Seeing none, we'll have a real call vote on the ordinance.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Always Meyer?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passed with seven to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. Ordinance 2014-10.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Tippecanoe County, Indiana, Uso Amendment Number Eighty-One.
What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Pardon me. I hear approve this ordinance.
And Mr. Clinker?
Aye, second.
All right, it's been moved in second to consider ordinance 2014-10. Is there someone to present the ordinance? Mr. Reynolds?
If he would go ahead and-
Chasnick again.
The, based on technology, the Area Plan Commission has been digitally, when we do a rezone, and they have to change the maps, in the old days, it was all hand drawn. Well, we still, that's the official map, is that hand drawn, but they're, but they've been digitizing all of these maps. This ordinance makes those digital zoning maps the official maps, so people can rely on them. And that's really all it does. And they're recommending approval, and the city council approves it. Those become the official maps, the ones they've been doing digitally anyhow for the last several years.
All right. Thank you. Any questions of council?
How long will that process take to take them all from paper to digital? Because I've heard of situations where there's been discrepancies, and they say, oh, well, we have to go back to the paper map. And so has there a lot of effort been put into making sure that they go inside?
I think that, you know, they, as far as I understand, based on the staff report, they've been digitizing them for a number of years. But the ordinance only allow, they also have to have the paper zoning map, and the ordinance says that's the official map. This will allow those maps that are digitized, that they have digitized, as long as the director of the area plan has certified them, those become the official map. So it basically says they can digitize them, the area plan director has to certify that they're accurate, and I'm assuming she'll then compare digitized maps to paper maps, and they'll become the official when she certifies them.
So there's a mistake in certifying, or whatever, as of the process?
And you have to call up Sally and complain.
Yeah. So they're in the process, it's not all certified yet, they are in the process of certifying?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, this was approved 12th for Area Plan Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the members of the public on ordinance 2014-10, which is to amend the zoning ordinance of Tippecanoe County? Seeing none, we'll have a real call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Always Meyer?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passed with seven to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. We have no resolutions for consideration tonight, so reports to standing committees, I don't think there's any outstanding issues with standing committees. No reports of special committees. Report by the mayor, the mayor's not here tonight. He had to attend a ceremony for his graduating daughter. Miscellaneous in new business.
I hope that the clerk brought a video with her. But concerning cleanup, hey, particularly.
If you put in happy Lafayette, city of Lafayette-
On the city of Lafayette YouTube channel.
Yeah, you can get a YouTube.
You can get on, just get on the city website, and in the city YouTube site, and you can just click in happy clean sweep, or just happy city of Lafayette. The, there's a video of all, of every department that participated in clean sweep, and in the video, and it was, it's very entertaining. And if you don't come away smiling, you're really not happy.
Yeah.
Well, I personally want to thank you for putting it together and raising the morale. I mean, tell you, everybody in there was, it was outstanding.
Everybody had a great time doing it. I mean, it was, we all have chuckled at each other.
Bottom line is that two weeks last-
You can either stop by my office, I mean, the next two weeks, and sign up, or you can show up on May 17th at 9:00 a.m. at Columbian Park, at the shelter by the, by the cove, the swimming pool. And we will get a free t-shirt, and gloves, and bags to pick up trash. And if you don't have an area that you've noticed that needs picked up, we'd be more than happy to assign you to an area. It, this, you know, everybody's welcome, kids, grandparents, groups, the bike group, you're more than welcome to come pick up the trash. And once you've picked up the areas that we've assigned you, we just ask that you leave it on the curb side, and the sanitation guys will go through the following week and pick it up. And then we do have the traveling trophy upstairs as well, the golden broom, and it's not for you to ride. But you can get the, yeah, you can ride it in. And the group that collects the most trash gets their name on the, the golden broom. So. And it does help the community a lot, too.
Have we reestablished any, anybody who will take tires again, or no still?
Yes, we do have, the tires will have, you'll have to take them down to the barn, or down on South Third Street. And you do have to be a citizen or a, in Lafayette, and you have to have a valid ID that you do actually live in the city. And we're kind of asking everybody just to limit themselves to like one or two tires, you know. Don't get your aunts or your uncles that live in, in Brookston, and bring their tires in. We kind of hope everybody's, you know, sensitive to the folks that are actually taking the tires for us. And appliances as well, the barn will be open from nine to noon, and you can take your appliances down there as well. So.
Thank you. Any other reports of councilman? I would just probably, at this point, also like to acknowledge Tree Lafayette. Over the weekend, they had about 150 volunteers out to help plant shrubs and trees near the trail around the Gleneagra School, and it was a great turnout. And I want to just thank them and all the volunteers for their help in that. At this point, we'll move, yes.
A phenomenon that's been going on, apparently, at many elections, property to post signs. Of our government has some very big responsibility. I will bring it up at every election.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. And I've also mentioned that to a couple judicial candidates, myself, last couple of weeks. It's always a learning experience, especially when you get new people involved in the process, and they've never run before. And it's always, it's just always frustrating, because you have to keep reminding and reminding. I think the county chairman need to sort of send out notices, and early on, to all their candidates, reminding them of that. And I think we just need to continue to educate them, because I'm totally on board with you on that. That's, you're right.
About the size of them, Ron?
Baby Bill.
All right. We're moving now to a portion of our agenda, public comment. This is the part of our agenda where we invite people from the public to come and comment, and share your thoughts, or ideas, or issues with us. We typically ask that you keep your comments limited to three minutes. And so with that, I invite anyone to come forward. Mr. Alkire, this is your opportunity.
I apologize for my doing that.
From home?
Don't listen to him.
Don't listen to him.
Hey, I just have three minutes here. Okay, last summer, this small group of people got together, and we started discussing, you know, why is it so hard for the city of Lafayette to accept poultry raising in the backyard, just a few hens, whatever. And, you know, we looked into the law, and how that happened, and then what happened, I think, it was really unfortunate. I think the level of conversation there was just out of control. It's part of the reason that over this last winter, I really didn't do anything, because I think it's, it's a good idea just to keep this conversation out of, let's say, the media likes trivial things that get a lot of attention, that don't have a lot of, I think bicycles probably more important than, but I have many friends in West Lafayette who have a few chickens. And there never seems to be a problem. I think they're animal control. People have had a few calls. It's not one of those pit bulls running down the alley inviting children issues. And really, what I'm asking the council, and everyone here, is to consider revising Lafayette's ordinances about maintaining poultry in the city. That there are model laws in Madison, Wisconsin, Iowa City, you can find a lot of them online. And some of them are very restrictive. You'll have to have a fee you pay, and then an inspection, and all of these little rules, how big the run is, and all of that. That's very, let's say, very officious. Other cities have just said you can't have any cocks, just hens, and the limit is a certain number, five or six. And they operate on a complaint policy, that if the neighbors start complaining, someone will come over and look. And Lafayette already has a nuisance animal law on the book. So I would, you might want to look at, at that law that is now part of, on the books here, and how it got there. I think we all know, you know, when animal control came to the city from the county, that's how that got there. Hasn't been around that long. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ben.
So this summer, I'll form a focus group, and we'll keep you informed of what we see.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public?
Perry, Barbara 3700, Redbud Avenue. And I like to, I thank the clerk for making that video. It was, it was great. It was, the best part is everybody, all the departments is involved. That's what was great. And we already talked about clean sweeps, I don't need to go deep on that. And just urge everybody to get involved in that. And you already talked about the trees, so I don't need to be on that. And I encourage everybody, if they haven't already, to get out and vote tomorrow, because it's very important. No matter who you vote for, just get out and vote. And as I always do this time, make sure you thank your mother for, on Mother's Day, Sunday. And have Mother's Day, see all you ladies up here. Have a good night, y'all.
Thank you, Perry. Any other comments from members of the public? Mr. Campbell?
I move we adjourn.
Mr. Clinker?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Yep.